I wanted to wait till you girls were in. Welcome to the Board of Education's May 9, 2024 regular session meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Horn.
Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We just have a few announcements before we get into our agenda. Mr. Triplett will not be in attendance tonight due to out-of-town travel. And just a reminder that our high school graduation ceremonies begin on Thursday, May 16, and run through Friday, May 24. I look forward to seeing my fellow board members and Superintendent Ryswick at many of these ceremonies. And on behalf of the board, I wish our amazing class of 2024 the best as they begin their post-secondary journeys. We couldn't be prouder of their accomplishments, and we have a few of them here with us this evening for special recognition. So we're excited to celebrate them and all of our seniors. Also, please note that May 23 is the last half-day of school for our students, and May 24 is the last day for teachers. And now we all hope for an amazing, well-deserved summer break for each of them. And I also want to remind everyone that it is National Teacher Appreciation Week. So please remember to express gratitude for all of our amazing educators in our schools. Are there any requested changes to the agenda? Ms. Mike?
Yes, I would like to request a remove and replace on 11F. I have an updated version, but it also has an updated title. And Ms. Cottney let me know that we need to make sure and have that correct when it's called out. Okay? And I, everyone has copies of these, and anyone that's in the audience that would like a copy, Ms. Harrington has them printed out for you. Thank you.
I guess do we need a second to change the agenda? Or how does that, okay? Yeah? That's true. Okay. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So Madam Chair, that new caption would be to have discussion and possible action on a resolution of the Board of Education of Knox County, Tennessee, affirming that school security officers and school resource officers will continue to be the only armed personnel on Knox County schools campuses.
All right. So we have a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right. So do we do that change later? Does that work?
Yeah, I'll just read it that way.
Gotcha. Okay. So we'll now move on to our special recognition of our Bearden High School and Farragut Middle School dance teams. So I'll turn it over to, well, I know he's Coach Brown, so, Coach Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Ryswick, board members, and staff. We've been trying for a couple of months to schedule a time to recognize the Bearden High School and Farragut Middle School dance teams. But as you can imagine, these talented students are in very high demand. We're excited that we're able to recognize them tonight. Before I call them up, I want to highlight just a few of their accomplishments. For more than 40 years, the Universal Dance Association National Dance Team Championship has been the culmination of the season for dancers across the country. It is known as the most prestigious high school championship in the United States. This year, our Bearden High School dance team is celebrating their eighth national championship. The team took home the gold medal in the Large Varsity Palm Division. This team is a group of student athletes who support athletics, groups, and clubs by performing as spirit squad on the sidelines and at other events. Additionally, they compete in Varsity Jazz, Palm, and Game Day at the TSSAA State Championship and the UDA Championship each year. This is Bearden's fourth Palm title and the team's fourth straight year winning a title in any division. The team also brought home a bronze medal in the Large Varsity Division One Game Day category and a seventh-place finish in the Large Varsity Jazz Division. The team, who has been coached by head coach Hannah Keithley for 12 years, has won all eight of its titles under her leadership. Congratulations to Coach Keithley, assistant coach Katherine Brassfield, and school sponsor Rebecca Nutter. Farragut Middle Schools dance team earned a national championship for the second year in a row. This 13-member squad won first place in Palm and second place in Jazz in the junior high school category under the guidance of head coach Macy Brink. It is impressive to note that nearly half of this team's members were new this year. They also won a TSSAA state title last December. Congratulations to Coach Brink, assistant coach Laura Warrington, and school sponsor Elizabeth Wilson. It is my honor to recognize both of these teams for their local, state, and national accomplishments. I will start with the Bearden High team, and as I call your name, please come forward and face the audience. After everyone is called, we will take a quick photo. Abigail Adams. Kinsey Banks. Ainsley Brown. Baylor Brown. Caroline Brown. Emily Carver. Addison Duggan. Avery Dunkinson. Candace Eastman. Piper Gould. Mallory Haskins. Jordan James. Elijah Gisaya. Avery Lemonselli. Sophia Lewis. Kalen Martinez. Elizabeth McLaughlin. Marion Mitchell. Lana Nelson. Brielle Pickett. Kaitlyn Ramey. Whitley Sams. Mallory Simpson. Katherine Smithy. Abigail Standifer. Madeline Taylor. Kelsey Wright. Coach Hannah Keithley. Assistant coach Katherine Brassfield. And school sponsor Rebecca Nutter. And now for the Farragut Middle School team. Emery Campbell. Riley Cronus. Kate Fowler. Emma Kate Kilpatrick. Brooklyn Knight. Ella Marie Lambert. Natalie Mack. Riley Mack. Audrey McHaleb. Parker Miller. Sarah Shoup. Kaitlyn Stickley. Mary Ella Wendell. Coach Macy Brink. Assistant coach Laura Warrington. And school sponsor Elizabeth Wilson.
I was gonna say, y'all don't have to stay for this whole meeting. Congratulations again, girls, we're so proud of you. I know several of them, so I was really excited to see that. It's very special. All right, we will get into our regular agenda items. Ms. Cote, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item seven, consent agenda.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight A, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B-180, public forum as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight B, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D-241, internal school funds as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn, do we have any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight C, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D-280, fundraising activities as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by, was that you, Ms. Pike? Second by Ms. Pike, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight D, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-120, safety as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Horn, do we have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight E, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-122, emergency preparedness planning and training as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight F, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-123, crisis management as amended.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Pike, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight G, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-170, student transportation management as amended.
That was a lot. Motion by Mr. Watson, second by Ms. Horn, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight H, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-171, scheduling and routing as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, second by Ms. Pike. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight I, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-172, agreement for pupil transportation services as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Mr. Watson, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight J, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-190, food service management as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. Watson, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight K, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy F-121, building new athletic facilities as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Horn, do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight L, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-341, uniform grading policy as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Watson, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine A, approved Tennessee Department of Education State School Improvement Grant in the total amount of three million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents for Austin East Magnet High School, Green Magnet Academy, Maynard Elementary School, and Vine Middle Magnet School.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen, do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine B, approved grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Military and the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency for a public assistance grant in the amount of one million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, thirty dollars and seventy-four cents.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Pike, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine C, approved Tennessee Department of Education Additional Targeted Support and Improvement 23 Grant in the total amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for East Knox County Elementary School, House Middle School, and Moreland Heights Elementary School.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Owen, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine D, approved grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Intellectual and Developmental Disability and receipt of grant in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars designated for the purchase of an adult-sized changing table for Powell High School.
Motion by Ms. Pike, a second by Ms. Horn, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine E, approved Casey's Cash for Classrooms Grant, the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for Central High School.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. Watson, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine F, approved Melissa Hope Foundation Grant in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars for Dogwood Elementary School.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Owen, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine G, approved Nishwanger Foundation AP Access for all mini-grants in the total amount of seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents for the KCS Virtual School.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine H, approved Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee Grant, up to thirty-four thousand dollars designated for the installation of a sensory room at Pleasant Ridge Elementary School.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Pike, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ten A, approved contracts with Backflow Specialty Company Incorporated and Jarrett Fire Protection LLC for provision of backflow services up to one hundred thousand dollars annually for the term of June one, two thousand and twenty-four through May thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, which may be extended for four additional years.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ten B, approved contracts with Dotson Pest Control, Orkin LLC, and Rentikill of North America Incorporated for provision of pest control services up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the term of June one, two thousand and twenty-four through May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, which may be extended for four additional years.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ten C, approved contracts with Energy Electric Incorporated, Skilled Services Quality Construction LLC, and the Cherokee Group for provision of electrical services up to one million dollars annually for the term of May one, two thousand and twenty-four through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, which may be extended for four additional years.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Reverend Butler, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ten D, approved contract with International Baccalaureate Organization for provision of an international diploma program, up to two hundred thousand dollars annually for the term of June one, two thousand and twenty-four through May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, which may be extended for four additional years.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Reverend Butler, do we have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ten E, approved consulting agreement with Milan Chicago LLC for provision of stakeholder engagement and information collection services to facilitate the two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-nine strategic plan, up to fifty thousand dollars.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Reverend Butler, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven A, approved two thousand and twenty-five Board of Education Annual Calendar.
A motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven B, approved two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year calendar.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen, do we have any discussion? Ms. Pike.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to bring up kind of some of what we had talked about on Monday. You know, just that a lot of our families and parents are not exactly happy with the early release days. And I'm curious if we have any other members that would be interested in potentially taking those off of the calendar for this next year. Because I am.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, this is actually for the next year, right? So are you talking about for the twenty-five, twenty-six? So I think that, I think that I would, I mean, I spoke about that the other night, that I'm interested in looking into that. I really think that I would, I don't know if we want to make that decision, or if we should just ask that they take it back to the Teacher Advisory Council and the principals and revisit that, because I think there's obviously a disconnect somewhere. And I mean, I wouldn't mind hearing other board members, but there's obviously a disconnect somewhere, because what I'm hearing is very different than what, than what, you know, we talked about the other night. So, and I would be happy to hear what Dr. Wilson has to say, and, but...
Yeah, I agree, because I've heard from some people who are also not, not a fan of the days, but I would like to maybe send that back. And, Dr. Wilson, I know you had your light on.
No, I'd just say, I'm happy to follow up however you all feel is appropriate. And we talked about Teacher Council, Family Council the other night, I talked about too, if we wanted to do a broader reach. Ms. Lawton and I have talked about potential through REA of designing a few survey items that we could send to families, to administrators, and to teachers to kind of grasp a full picture. And I'd just like to say this, too. You know, I did go back today, I said the other night, I was not in the seat at the time that they had these conversations and did that. And I did go back and look at the board comments from when we talked about it before. We certainly did propose it as a pilot effort. And, you know, I think the reality is, we've, you know, over the last two years, we've had nine of these. So we've had eighteen hours of participation in what those activities are. Certainly in the first year, some opportunity to refine those. And so I think we certainly should look at the structure of how we're doing that, but also be attuned that, you know, again, where it came from originally and the why behind it hasn't probably changed that much in that we do need time and opportunities for our teachers to engage in professional development. We may have to figure out what a different strategy for that is, and I think we're open to that discussion. And then again, if we can use some surveys and things to paint a better picture of, you know, what that might be, then I think we're obviously open to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be, and, you know, we obviously have, and I know Dr. Ryswick has his light on too, so we can, but we also have the twenty-four, twenty-five school year also, so they're on the calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five. So this is obviously even the calendar beyond that. So, you know, I, I think it's difficult for, the principals have a certain viewpoint, and they know what, what they want to accomplish in their building, so, you know, we just have a lot of different agendas. I mean, I think everybody has their own perspective. So I think a deeper dive could be helpful to see what the big picture is and where, what makes the most sense.
I think it'd be good to revisit it. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are we talking about just for twenty-five, twenty-six, or are we asking the staff to also look at next year? I think, I think I would like to extend the ask to next year also. And also, since that kind of thing is a working condition, I'd like to see it discussed with the PEC team. Thank you.
Dr. Ryswick?
Thanks. I'll say to Ms. Owen's comment too, it actually has been, and that was one of the, I think last month's PEC meeting, we were talking through some of that too, just talking about what, I think what we heard from that was really working with that team to get clear expectations across the board. I know Dr. Wilson addressed it there too. I just want to reiterate something that Dr. Wilson said, because I think I know the guy who was in that seat when it passed on the pilot. But, so I was going to say, it was with a lot of research, and that's the part you guys are saying too. I know, you know, Dr. Adams has been in Oak Ridge for, had been in Oak Ridge a long time before coming here, and there are systems that do that on a regular basis. And, you know, when we were exploring why that was, it was, as Dr. Wilson said, like, the work doesn't go away. Like, you know, what needs to be done from planning for some of the small learning community things, from some of the PLCs, professional learning communities, the school-based things, you know, district doesn't use that time, schools do, to do what they need to do for their, you know, they all have school plans, and it's like they don't really have any time during the year to work on the initiatives they have to deliver on. So I think, I think that's kind of what it was born out of. We had heard a lot at that time that there's not time in the day to get all this done. And so although we're hearing, you know, maybe from some parents and things, I totally agree, we should, we should dive into that, I think we just need to know, like, that work then has to be done at some point. And, you know, this isn't a trade-off of like a shorter calendar, you know, this is, that will now be instructional time, and they'll be teaching during that time. So I just want to make sure as we do go into it that everybody has a full understanding of what that trade-off is, because I think there had been times like, like working to get to this, and we do hear lots of times, I know I see my friend Paul in the crowd, we talk about, you know, time and teacher schedules every day and trying to get that done. So no doubt, I echo what you say, Dr. Wilson, we need to get better at defining what that is so that all schools are clear on that, but at the same time, the need for time comes across a lot. So I, again, we'll look into it. I just want to make sure that we see the big picture too, because we'll start hearing the others, is what I'm saying. It'll come back to saying, when there's time for teachers to get this done.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, yeah. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Wilson, I just have another ask. While you're, while you're formulating that survey, if you would ask families how they feel about a full day rather than a half day, a lot of what I'm hearing is frustration with trying to, trying to schedule around that half day from families and from teachers feeling like it's sort of a wasted instructional day. So if we could consider some other way to maybe move that around, I think that might be helpful. It would impact fewer total days.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, Dr. Ryswick, to your point, you know, we did talk extensively about it then, and, you know, there's obviously value and there's professional development that needs to happen. So I do think it's a combination of a disconnect of expectations and what the day is for, and, you know, I said to one teacher, in a perfect world, the principal and the teachers would really work together on the best use of that time so that, so that the teachers really feel like it is valuable time. And if the teachers feel like it's valuable time, then they're able to say to the parents, I know this isn't imposition, but I think it's really helpful and valuable. So I think, I think there's a, there's a lot of disconnect maybe with, in that realm, that principals feel like they need this professional development. That principals feel like they need this professional development, but teachers feel like they need something else or whatever.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing too. So I think revisiting it is probably a good path.
Yeah, and that's why I'm...
See what's, yeah, what's the disconnect? What are we looking to get out of this?
Because, and that's why I'm not comfortable making, I don't think personally that we need to make a change. I think that we need some, you know, kind of evidence-based decision-making in this realm. Because, and I think based on what you find, you know, we may need to make a calendar change for the coming school year also, so.
I agree with that, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
That was a good discussion, any more discussion?
So there's a motion on the floor made by Dr. Butler and Ms. Owen seconded that motion. Do you all want to withdraw your motion or?
Yeah, so good to vote, okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven C, approved fiscal year 2024 general purpose budget line item transfers for January 1 through March 31, 2024 in the amount of $303,712.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Watson, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven D, approved charter school application review team substitutions.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn, any discussion? Ms. Christie.
Just a quick question. I'm wondering what this would look like if we deferred it for one month since Mr. Triplet voiced some concerns about it and then he is not here tonight. I mean, is that a, Dr. Ryswick, is that a, an issue with staff?
I think, thank you, Ms. Christie, Madam Chair. I think, I'll, Dr. Wilson speak to that. I think there are some trainings that are set up. But, you know, how set in stone those are, I'll let him answer that for you.
So I did speak with Ms. Nixon and the, there is a training for the, for the team as they move into doing, you know, the process for this year. And had spent some time with those team members, kind of thinking through summer plans and vacations and all of those things. The training was set originally for earlier in May, but because of the conflicts of interest and the need to change the committee, has now been pushed back to May the 20th is what the date is set for. So certainly if we deferred, then that would be a date that would have to change. It is not probably an absolute deal breaker. It might result in multiple trainings for smaller groups of people having to occur to accommodate schedules. But that's, that's where we are on that.
I think my, one of my concerns is this is always a politically charged debate when it comes up. I know that there, I mean, what the review committee does is pretty straightforward, right? But, you know, with, with that concern being brought up, is it going to turn into an issue if they bring back a recommendation? That, that's all that, I mean, I, I think either of the people that were suggested would be okay, you know, and I don't know how other board members feel about it. I mean, I'm fine with moving forward, but I don't know to see how everybody else feels about it.
Anyone else? Ms. Horn.
Thank you. So basically it would cost more time if we did, if we made it. So I, I mean, based on that, I think that we should just go forward.
I agree, but I appreciate you bringing those concerns up and talking through those. Is there any more discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven E, discussion and possible action on resolution affirming that school security officers and school resource officers will continue to be the armed personnel on school campuses.
And we do have several public speakers on this. I'm going to play the role of Mr. Triplet tonight. Our first public speaker is Mr. Schofield, Bill Schofield. Welcome.
My name is Bill Schofield. I have a child in Knox County Schools and my wife is an employee of Knox County Schools as well. I have a vested interest in this subject. I also have a long list of firearm certifications, protective service experience, and marksmanship credentials, which I don't have enough time to list now. I want it understood that what I'm about to say is not an indictment of any of the local law enforcement organizations. I'm a graduate of the KPD Citizens Academy and I've gone on ride-alongs with the police. I have friends and family in law enforcement and I support them fully. If the police are honest, however, they'll tell you that they cannot guarantee the safety of schoolchildren or staff. They'll do their best, but they cannot make assurances. This is what we're talking about tonight. When every other safeguard has failed, do you want the victims to have an option or not? Your resolutions are going to prevent victims from having options. The only thing they'll be able to do if all the other options fail is cower and pray that someone with a gun shows up in time. In a mass shooting, the average is one victim shot every eight seconds until the perpetrator stopped. If the police have a three-minute response time, the amount of time I'm allowed to speak, and a very rapid response time at that, that means that somebody will be shot, more than 22 people will be shot in three minutes. Currently, you have a number of schools with only one officer protecting them. This is a single point of failure. When that officer is compromised, and I hope that never happens, the shooter is free to do whatever they want, shooting someone every eight seconds. SROs and police are a great deterrent, but they're also well-identified. They'll be the first people targeted by a determined shooter. After that, you have nothing left but to wait for backup, time for a killer to kill. If you think that won't happen, I submit the Uvalde and Parkland, Florida incidences. In Parkland, the shooter was unopposed. He kept shooting until he got bored and went to McDonald's for a snack. This is what you're going to put in place with the resolutions tonight. Unfettered access to targets. My wife, my kid. The criminals have several advantages. The time, they pick the time and the place, the level of force that you will use. There's nothing you can do about that. But what they don't know is the level of response will be brought against them. It's, if it's only a uniformed officer, then they do know the level of response. If it's anonymous capable people, you significantly increase the risk to the perpetrator. Why would you give away the one advantage you can have? It makes no sense. Do any of you know how many other states permit guns in schools? It's 33, more than half. Do you know why you never hear about accidental or rampage shootings that these, that encourages? Because it never happens. If it did, you'd surely hear about it. The presence of trained, capable, armed adults in schools reduces the likelihood of a mass shooting incident. You want to vote against that. You're effectively voting for more mass shooting opportunities. Don't make a bad choice based on fear, feelings, or emotion. Make a good choice based on facts and logic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Lori Heffler, Lori? I'm so sorry. Welcome. Just state your name and county of residence, you have three minutes.
My name is Lori Heffler and I'm a Knox County resident. Thank you, members of the board, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Lori Heffler and I am a proud community member of Knoxville and a lifelong children's advocate. And for me, the decision to stand here tonight in front of you is deeply personal. As a young girl, school was always my safe haven, especially during times of adversity at home. Raised by a teenage mother with my birth father battling drug addiction and incarceration and facing the turmoil of divorce multiple times throughout my childhood, I experienced a handful of adverse childhood experiences. Statistically, I should have never graduated high school. Yet, like many of the students in Knox County School District, school is where I found my refuge and felt safe. And because of that, I persevered, ultimately becoming the first in my family to graduate high school, the first to attend and graduate college, and eventually obtaining a master's degree in educational leadership. From my early days as an elementary teacher to becoming a school administrator, and now in my current role as a trauma-informed school consultant, I've dedicated almost three decades of advocating for the mental health and safety and well-being of children. Taking a firm stance against teachers, against arming teachers aligns with this district's commitment to being trauma-informed. Research consistently shows that the presence of more guns in schools increases student anxiety and is not a trauma-informed response. Our district has invested tremendous resources in becoming trauma-informed and improving students' mental health. And arming teachers conflicts with these efforts. It is evident that this board agrees that arming teachers is unnecessary in our district. Any hesitation or reluctance to issue a clear resolution undermines the trust to our students, teachers, families, and stakeholders. Passing a resolution with clear and firm language provides the opportunity for this board to demonstrate unwavering confidence in our school resource officers and school security personnel. Furthermore, as a seasoned educator, I can attest that a firm resolution against arming teachers will support our efforts in attracting and retaining high-quality educators. Allowing teachers to focus on their core responsibilities without the added concern of carrying firearms will ensure that we attract and retain the best educators. And finally, it is crucial for this board to serve as a model for our students by demonstrating the willingness to listen to each other and to your constituents. By communicating a clear message to the Knox County community that we have full confidence in our current school security and safety personnel and do not see a need to arm teachers, we can inspire trust and unity within our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Erin Keck. Erin.
Erin Keck, Knox County. I am here to support the resolution that Ms. Bike and Ms. Owen have drafted. I read over it. I think that Ms. Christie's resolution is, it really doesn't say anything. It just says that we're going to continue to have the resource officers be the armed school personnel. That's like saying we're just going to continue to have the cafeteria workers serve food. It's not really a resolution. I like the wording of "the only armed personnel in Knox County Schools", because that's clear. I mean, otherwise we're just stating facts of what's already happening. I have three different roles in my life that, that give me this opinion. And I'll start with the first one. I am a teacher, I'm a preschool teacher. And I could not imagine myself or my coworkers being armed at my school. Just even thinking of that is terrifying to me. That's not my role, that's not my job. I don't have armed school security at my preschool. But I do not feel that we would be safer with guns. I never feel that more guns is the answer to safety. Also, I'm a parent. As a parent of a child in a Knox County school, I would not feel comfortable with her being in a classroom with teachers that have weapons. I don't know these teachers, I don't know what their intentions are. We've had teachers, the majority of them in Knox County are wonderful. We've had teachers that have made some pretty poor decisions in classrooms in Knox County. And I would hate to think about that happening with a loaded firearm. Terrifying as a parent. My third role is as a community member. I live on the same street as an elementary school. And I would not like to think of my neighborhood all of a sudden allowing 50 additional people to start bringing guns into our neighborhood and on our streets. That is another thing that is scary to me. I would even take it further. I think that Chief Perryard is a very, very competent man. He has a great team with him. The school security and the school resource officers, I think that's all we need. Let's not forget that there's still a family that is mourning the loss of their child after someone with a legal right to have a gun came into Austin East High School and shot him. If that person had knowledge of the child, if that person had been someone that regularly was at school, maybe Anthony Thompson Jr. would not be dead right now. But I cannot imagine that a solution for safety is more guns. Thank you.
Thank you. Samantha Singh. Samantha? Just state your name and county of residence, you have three minutes.
My name is Samantha Singh. I'm from Knox County. I'm here as a very concerned parent of two children in Knox County Schools. I watched this law get passed. I watched the legislative sessions, the committees. And I understand that in some rural areas in Tennessee, there might not be law enforcement in every school. But there definitely are law enforcement officers in every school in Knox County and we don't need to have teachers that have guns in our schools. As a parent, it is very important to me that this board says very firmly that we will not arm our teachers. Anything less than that is saying that you're planning to allow our teachers to carry guns. Our students, families, and frankly, our teachers and staff deserve a firm understanding of where you stand on this. We have trained law enforcement officers on our campuses to protect our students and staff. And that is very clearly the preference of the majority of Knox County citizens. In February of 2010, a teacher shot a principal and assistant principal in a Knox County school. We shouldn't forget that. A teacher. It doesn't matter what training people have or what goes into it before we let somebody bring a gun into a school if we're allowing people to bring guns into school that aren't law enforcement officers. We shouldn't allow other people who aren't law enforcement officers to bring guns into our schools with our kids. Please send a firm message to everyone in Knox County and tell us what you really want is for our teachers not to be armed. Thank you.
Thank you. Andre Canty, Andre? I hope I pronounced her last name right, sir. Welcome.
All right, cool, appreciate it. All right, Knox County. So I'll be pretty quick. I wasn't prepared to speak because I thought I'd sign up yesterday, so I signed up today. I've been pretty cut and dry about it though. I ran for school board around 2018 and I was asked around arming teachers after the Parkland shooting in Florida. And my response, it was immediate, I said kids will get shot. It sounded hyperbolic, right? Because I would run into office, you know, sometimes do sound bites, you know, gather, you know, gather some information, I mean, some attention, but I wasn't too far off. Disparies are already bad with school discipline and school outcomes. The gun violence, which I'm also addressing in my, in my professional life, there'll also be the case, right? Not a lot of teachers, teacher advocacy groups, students, not a lot of parents, parents groups, are supporting armed teachers. That's just like the facts, right? There's no feelings about it. Not a lot of people, the stakeholders, the teachers, the parents, the children are with this. And also what the previous speaker said about the principal that was shot, that was my PE teacher from Cerro Mill Green, right? So with this, with this proposal to arm teachers, it further illustrates the prison and school pipeline. What it does is illustrate to children that there is no safe place, particularly where some teachers will not be, some people will not be informed about armed teachers in their school. So it creates that unease and that trauma, as the previous speaker said. And increases more anxiety and more tense, you know, in an intense situation, right? And Columbine, there were SROs. And currently with Knox County security, I'm sure there is already a protocol and procedures about how to address any kind of violence. How an armed teacher will factor in that, I don't know. It may mess up their game plan, their protocols, their policy, stuff like that. So if something happens, are they a part of that protocol? Are they a part of those procedures? I don't know. It may create more chaos than solutions, right? So I agree with everybody else. I propose... I propose a resolution to firmly stand that we as Knox County is against arming teachers. We have SROs, we have security officers. They work fine, and we should be about the students and the teachers and the parents who all oppose it. So let's stand behind them. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Taft. Ms. Taft, did you want to speak to these resolutions? The topic was not clear. No? Okay, we'll call you at the next time. Thank you. If you'll state your name and county of residence for the record.
Sean Murphy, Knox County. I have a different perspective. I grew up in Connecticut. I lived 20 minutes from Sandy Hook when it happened. I'm privy to things that are not public because I have a connection in that community. And what I'm seeing in the public comment tonight is the same disturbing problems that Connecticut had in 2012. The first thing is, I've been to two school board meetings. I've heard teachers stand up. I wouldn't trust many of them with a gun. They don't trust themselves. We shouldn't trust them either. The law is voluntary. People should be picked. You don't pick everybody. I don't have the training to defend a school. I wouldn't accept that. I'd take the training if I were a teacher. The first, and it really concerns me because Connecticut didn't learn from its mistakes. They tore the little history on it. They tore the school down, made the people sign a non-disclosure agreement, tore the whole thing down, and covered the whole thing up, and wouldn't have the conversation. I lived in Newtown for a year, and I left because I couldn't stand, there was an aura in that place, because the community never talked to each other about this horrible event. Here are the problems that we face. Number one, if you support a resolution where you don't want anyone but police armed in school, here's what I'd like you to do, for the school board members and the public. Put a sign in your front yard that says, "My home has no guns." Watch what happens, because the people who look at this rationally, not emotionally, knows you're going to have a problem. Gun-free zones are where 94% of mass shootings happen. Look up John Lott, L-O-T-T. Noah's way more about this than I do, and he's way smarter. The mere fact of eliminating a gun-free zone, meaning I'm asking you to do the following, pass a resolution that says guns are allowed in the school. You will not speak in public as to who's allowed, and you don't have to allow anybody. The mere fact of eliminating the gun-free zone will make a big difference because shooters target schools. They target gun-free zones. Aurora, Colorado, when the guy shot up the movie theater, drove to go shoot one up. Newtown, Connecticut. Another problem you're facing is the Castle Rock decision from the U.S. Supreme Court. Police are not required to defend us. If there's one SRO and he's on the other side of the building or in the bathroom, you have no defense. I hope we never have this problem here, like I watched this go on. The principal lived in the town I was living, and I had to watch, we had to stand out in the street in front of her funeral because a bunch of people were trying to protest it. We want to make sure that we have the element of surprise. So you can pass a resolution that says guns are allowed. You don't tell any, you can just privately say, "We're not arming anybody." That's one thing we need to do and be responsible, and stop being so emotional about guns. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Lauren? Is Lauren here?
I am.
Oh, hello. Oh, we were just talking. So you didn't write down what you wanted to speak about? Is it this?
It is not. It's for general public.
Awesome. Okay. So we'll see you at the end, Lauren.
Thank you.
Also, Donna. Same, Donna, did you want to speak on this item?
Absolutely.
All right, come on up. Welcome. Just state your name, county of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is Donna Trappasy, Knox County, formerly from the suburbs of New York City. So I do also have a different stance on this topic. I was very disheartened and disappointed in the stance taken on this, on the subject of teachers being armed by this board. I'm going to start over. I was disheartened and disappointed in the stance taken on, by this board against teachers and faculty defending themselves and our students against acts of violence and mass shootings. We have worked to remove pornographic and murderous material in KCS school libraries. You have fought us. Only when you were backed into a corner by public revelation of your own KCS computer servers banning the very material we have begged you to voluntarily remove, did you take any action, and it was minimal and non-effective. You provide our children with instructions on mass shootings with graphic comic book-style novels titled Assassination Classroom, and you refuse to remove these books. Every morning, parents send their children off with a hope and a prayer that they'll be safe. They pray the school on the news won't be their school. They pray the names on the next memorial won't be the names of their children. Lives are more important than feelings. Lives are more important than your electability in the next election. You have an opportunity to potentially save lives by empowering those who are qualified and, most importantly, choose to protect others to do so. Don't waste it.
Thank you, Donna. Sherry Super. Did you want to speak on that? You're at the end also? Okay. And then Ellen Lee. You didn't write down what your, do you want to speak on this? Okay, come on up, Ellen.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Lee, and I am, let me see what I am. I am a resident of Knox County, born and raised here. Moved away, came back, retired here, and I have siblings, grandchildren, nephews, nieces that have attended Knox County and Knox City schools from one end of the county to the other. So I'm very invested and very invested in my children and my grandkids and everybody that go there. Let me say first that I really want to thank Dr. Resnick for his comment the day after that the bill was passed into law. I felt like that gave a lot of people in the community a sense of reassurance. I think it was a major move at a major time. I think what I'm here today is to ask that the school board basically give Dr. Resnick support, give the community the support, and give them the definitive answer that we support Dr. Resnick. We support not arming our teachers. And this being Teachers Appreciation Week, I'm thinking, dear Lord, give the teachers a break. But anyway, I just asked for that. Plus, I want to say, I'm pretty sure, I know I am, older than anybody on this board and probably anybody else in this room. So that being said, age with all the aches and pains also comes with a little knowledge and a little judgment of character, and I truly believe that Dr. Resnick, from what I have seen him do in the past years, our new police chief and our sheriff, train the people that they have under them, and on the fact that they too, all those people, the policemen, the sheriffs, and the deputies, they have children in these schools. I totally believe that they will take every fiber of their being to protect our children. And I believe that they, and it's not easy. I'll also tell you something else. As far as Sandy Hook, I know millions of men, women in this country that I'm standing here today in this shirt because of Sandy Hook. So there has something good coming to try to do gun safety in schools and homes and communities that came out of Sandy Hook. That is our hope for tomorrow. So I'm asking that you please adopt this resolution by Board Member Baker. Thank you.
That concludes public forum on this item. Now, any discussion? Ms. Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will keep this very brief. As I stated Monday night, the resolution I submitted was written in a manner not to be politically charged. I do not oppose this bill. I'm thankful that it grants local control, which is something this board is constantly asking for, and not all school districts have the resources we have. I mean, we do have armed officers in all our schools, multiple armed officers in many of them. It recognizes the millions we've invested in security. It recognizes our tremendous partnerships with KPD and the Sheriff's Department and the dedication of our school security officers and Chief Perryard. And finally, again, as a mom of a Michigan State student, it's a reflection of my gratitude to those who do run toward the danger when we have a loved one in harm's way. I'm sorry if my resolution is not strong enough for everyone, but you know, sometimes to get a resolution or something like this passed, you have to meet in the middle. I hate resolutions. The fact that I submitted one is my middle. That is my compromise, and that is, my resolution is the only resolution that I will be voting on, and I am happy with it the way it is written, and that's really all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do thank Ms. Christie and Ms. Bike both for the effort, and Ms. Owens, what she played to bring us resolutions. I do believe in resolutions. For the purpose of a resolution, it says what you're going to do, what you believe in, until you change your mind, until something changes your mind. So I do think resolutions serve a purpose. I don't think we need to have one on everything, but I think we need to have one on this one simply because the public has asked us to. I thank, once again, Ms. Christie for this resolution because it does support our personnel, both that work for Knox County schools and those who work for Knox Police Department and Knox County Sheriff Department. I do, I do like, and I like most of the language, all the language that I see, quite honestly, but I do, I do think that we need to have a specific statement that either we do or we don't, and I think that that's not here with that last statement. So I move to amend this motion to insert in the now therefore being resolved that Knox County Board of Education hereby affirms that certified law enforcement personnel are equipped to manage the safety and security of Knox County schools to maintain the highest possible standards for student safety. School security officers, school resource officers, and other law enforcement officers will continue to be the and insert only armed personnel on campus. That is the motion to amend. Give me a second.
So you vote on the amended motion first, and then if that, you go back to the original? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I could support that resolution as amended. We have heard what happens when a teacher takes a gun into one of our local schools. We know that to be true, and we know that years later, this board was still having to deal with what had happened. Not arming teachers does not mean that we're creating a gun-free zone. We still have our armed officers. We are all supporting our armed officers. That is what both of these resolutions do, and I see no reason to not support our officers. One thing I'd like to share with this board is that I have a relative who, until recently, worked at a facility for incarcerated youth. They were incarcerated for committing felonies, and she was a teacher there. So these are teenagers who had committed murder and were incarcerated. Her classes were ages 16 to 18. In that facility, they had no armed teachers. They had no armed guards, a medium-security facility for teenagers who have committed felonies, and they believed that those students were best served by not having arms in their classrooms, by not having armed teachers or armed guards. I think we need to really think about that and consider all of the times that we've had discussions about reasons we don't want to put fences around some of our schools is because we don't want to have the feeling that it's like a prison. When we start arming multiple people in a school, we are creating that feeling much more than with a fence. How our students feel about going to school every day matters. How parents feel about sending their students to school every day matters. How our teachers feel about going to school every day matters. I don't think anyone in this room wants to consider me being armed in a classroom with That's not something we would want. Our security officers are very well-trained, significantly more than this law would allow for teachers, hundreds of hours more. We need to make a very firm statement so that there is no question about our intent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Reverend Butler, I appreciate the suggestion of the change. Ms. Christie, I appreciate you taking the effort, and Ms. Bike, to get out ahead of this and try to help us make a statement and craft a statement. And Ms. Christie, I've been on the board, you know, going on four years and know the struggles we have sometimes as a board to be unified in our response, and I could clearly see that was your attempt in this was to, you know, get something that could pass that would be a statement out there. I would assume, and I'm happy for you to correct me publicly, too, but I would assume that the timing of this resolution is in direct response to the law that was passed. I would assume that if that law didn't get passed, this resolution wouldn't have been written. And so because of that, I think the resolution should, at least in some way, address the issue at hand, and I think as written, it does a great job speaking to the support that we have for our officers and for our security personnel. And I think during like a law enforcement awareness week, that would have been a great resolution just to put during that one particular time. But because of the timing of this, I think without that word "only," I think it's, I think all it is, isn't a statement about how much we value our officers, and I don't think that's what's needed in the moment, and I think the word "only" does it. And I would hope that by suggesting the word "only" that that doesn't prevent us from passing it, because I think that would speak to your initial concern, right? That, you know, that we have such a hard time sometimes as a board passing a unified statement, and I would hope that that word "only" would not be the, be the thing that does it. And again, if this is something that you might have brought at another time, I'm happy to hear that, but I would assume that it was in direct response to the law that was passed, not as an indictment against the law, but as a message related to the law.
Ms. Christie, I think your lot was on next, even though your name's not showing up here, but go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm actually happy with the language of my resolution. I have sat through countless policy review meetings where we have hacked policies up because we've... This word's not necessary. This word's not necessary. You know, we need to... The resolution's clear. I feel. I mean, again, this is the resolution that I will support as it's written. I just...
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just need to point this out, and then I'm going to just reiterate what I said on Monday night because I think it still stands. But I think it's important to look at the facts of this law. And the fact is that if Knox County Schools or any district put this into place, it would be teachers volunteering and being vetted. I think it's disingenuous and it's just false. It's a false narrative that any district would go to any teacher and ask them if they would want to carry a firearm in a school. I just don't see that happening. So I think just continuing to say that is just spreading fear, and it's unnecessary. And I just wish we wouldn't do that. I wish we would dwell in the facts of the spirit of the law and what's actually in the law. And so that's just kind of as an aside. I would also say, I'm also not against this law, and I'll reiterate what I said on Monday night. I don't think that we, as a board, should be discussing security in a public meeting. I think that we need to trust our superintendent and our school security chief Perry Yard to make security decisions for matters pertaining to security. That's why we employ them. I think we need to trust them to make these decisions and that we should not be discussing security in a public meeting. And I... So I will not be voting for the amended resolution.
Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate what I've heard from my colleagues. I want to just make sure that it's clear that as I approach this, I looked at the law because it is a law. It's a state law. So it doesn't matter whether I support it or not. It's a state law. So we're going to... I think it's important that we understand that as Knox County School Board, we obey the law. So now that I understand that it's a law, what do we do with it? What I'm understanding, it was two options. One was to allow teachers to be armed, and it gave the guidelines that it has in the law right now. And the other was that we do not. So that was the two options. And so basically, what I was looking at, and once again, the language of this resolution I like because it doesn't even have to address the law in terms of whether we like it or not. It's basically that we feel like we have... Whatever we have in place is in place and it works. And so at this point, we do not have to arm teachers, and so we won't. And what I'm hearing the community want is that we make a statement, "Are we or not"? So I'm saying, I think we ought to make a statement. That's why with this resolution, for me, it works. And it works well if we put "only" in there. So it's not to say this is not a good statement. It's that it's not, for me, a definitive statement. And so I call for previous question unless someone...
Vote on that? On the question? Okay. All those in favor of calling the question? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So now, we will now vote on the motion to amend. So we will be voting on the amended resolution. Ms. Terry, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson? Ms. Bike? Ms. Horn? Mr. Wright? Ms. Christie? Ms. Henderson?
No.
That's four yes votes and four no votes.
Okay. Motion fails. So now we go back to the original resolution. Can we then have discussion on that? Or was the call the question for the whole thing? Okay. Mr. Watson has a technical question.
So we're voting on the particular item at hand. We obviously know that there's another item similar to it after this. Should this item pass, I'm assuming we would still have the discussion on the last item, although it's very similar. Is there any... I'm assuming there's no way to combine the discussion between the two. I mean, it seems odd that... I don't think we're going to pass both of them. And I think that's pretty clear. But it also seems odd that there's the potential we could pass both of them.
I've wondered the same thing when we had two of the, you know, similar items on...
So I would say this, Mr. Watson, that there's two items on the agenda. This board could pass neither, pass one, or pass both.
And there's no way to combine the both items, correct? Through a motion?
You could always make a motion. Yes.
Ms. Christie?
Yeah, again, I want to speak to the public discussions because that was a concern of mine as well. And just to be clear, I did, before this draft was attached, I did share it with Mr. Duper, shared it with Chief Perry Yard, who is here tonight. I also shared it with Sheriff Spangler and Chief Noel and had personal conversations with both of them as well. And did not get any feedback as to not moving forward with it, if that makes sense. I mean, I feel like...
Like there are changes from them.
Right. I feel like, I know that if there were concerns, they would have... And I would have respected that. I just want to be clear about that.
I feel like your resolution's very clear. And as I said Monday night, I will vote on the original document. Reverend Butler?
So, and I hope it's appropriate, we can have dialogue because I think that's important. Is that all right? We have dialogue? Okay. So you're saying, Ms. Christie, that the way that it's written, that this means that we're not going to arm students? I mean, I'm sorry.
We are not...
We are definitely not doing that.
Yes, Dr. Butler. We can all agree on that one. I feel confident in saying that. We will not be arming students.
Because they may be the next... When we talk about the victims being armed, they are victims, right? So we're saying... Are we saying with this statement that we are not arming teachers?
That is the intent of this statement, that things... That we are trusting our security professionals and experts to manage the safety and security of our schools.
So the way that it is... And I'm sounding like the question being asked and answered, but I just want to make sure. So the way, as I read it, the way it stands, that, you know, I noticed, Mr. Wright, you was nodding, that it says to you that we're not going to arm teachers? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is there any more discussion on this item? Okay. So we are now voting on the original resolution from Ms. Christie. Ms. Cottney, can you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson? Ms. Bike? Ms. Horn? Mr. Wright? Ms. Christie? Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Butler, would you like to change your pass vote?
Yes.
Ms. Owen, would you like to change your pass vote? Mr. Watson, would you like to change your pass vote? Ms. Bike, would you like to change your pass vote? Do you want to change it to no, or you're still passing? So that is seven yes votes and one pass vote.
Okay. So motion carries.
Item 11F, Discussion and Possible Action on Resolution of the Board of Education of Knox County, Tennessee, Affirming that School Security Officers and School Resource Officers Will Continue to Be the Only Armed Personnel on Knox County Schools' Campuses.
Motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Ms. Owen. Do we have any discussion on this item? Ms. Bike?
Thank you. I know we've talked a lot about this. We talked a lot about it on Monday. So the only thing... Well, I'm going to say that I really appreciate Ms. Owen's... Board Member Owen's bringing the resolution that she brought on Monday. When I first turned what I had in that was originally on the agenda, it was before it was actually a law and certainly was a strong response. And I recognize that. And so I really appreciate what Board Member Owen's brought to us on Monday. And so I appreciate that she was willing to meet with me today at our publicly called meeting where we were able to draft with some community members as well. This, and I feel like it is very succinct and very clear. And I really appreciate, you know, what we have substituted in here. And so with that, I will just read this email that we all appear to have gotten from an educator. It says, this was sent yesterday morning. It says, "Good morning. Now that this ridiculous teacher-carry bill has actually been signed into law, I am again asking/borderline demanding that you do not allow anyone besides school SROs and/or KPD..." I assume she also meant to include Knox County Sheriff's Department, "...to carry guns in our schools. I do not and will not feel safe going to work or allowing my children to attend school if this is allowed. As I have stated previously, if teachers are allowed to anonymously, to most of us, carry guns, the odds of an accidental shooting are much higher than the odds of these teachers somehow protecting students from an active shooter." We go... And this is the part that really kind of hit me, where she says, "We go through training every single school year that teaches us, as teachers, what to do in a case of an active shooter situation in a school. We have to witness over and over again these tragedies and learn from what these other teachers and students did right and what they did wrong, and learn from their mistakes. We are taught that hiding, locking doors, and staying quiet is the best thing that we can do as teachers to keep our kids safe and allow trained SRO and KPD officers to do what they are trained to do. This is how our schools should remain, do the right thing." And that really hit me especially... And that's why, you know, I understand that this is a law and that maybe some other school systems are going to benefit from it. But for Knox County, I think we have a very good system in place. And I appreciate all of the leadership and the people that do those jobs. And so I feel like this resolution represents that accurately and sends a very clear message. Thank you.
Do we have any more discussion on this item? Reverend Butler?
So... Thank you for putting this together. And thank you all for going through the process of looking at it again and meeting with the public, those who came out with you. What I really like about this one is to be, if resolved, it has the "only" in there. But honestly, we've just approved what... The board just approved one. And I think, well, I don't think, I know, I heard two of the board members who said they read it, that this was what's going to do what we want to do, and that is that we're not going to arm teachers. So we've already accomplished this. And so that was the reason why I think it may... If you could withdraw it, or... Because I don't think we're going to pass it.
I appreciate that. I would like to hear from any other board members that might share that sentiment.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't necessarily share or not share that sentiment. My purpose in bringing this was only to find some common ground between the two that were out there. I don't think there's anything in here that says we oppose the law or oppose anything that brought the law. It's just meant to make it very clear and as static and unemotional as language can be. Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Bike, I do appreciate the work that you've done on it and Ms. Owen for helping to kind of bring some consistency between the two of them. I'm not going to be voting on it, not because I don't appreciate the work and not because I don't think it's clear, but because I think it would be an exercise in futility. I think we... I mean, we've already done one vote with adding one word, "only". And to me, that would be more... That vote, for me, would be more of a political statement, and that's not the statement I'm trying to make tonight. I'm just... I think we do need a message that's out there. We voted on one. It wasn't my preference, but I voted yes. So...
I understand that, and I appreciate those opinions. Then I hope I will move to remove this from the agenda only in hopes that the community can feel comforted that we are all on the same page by the other resolution that did pass. It doesn't sound like they are, but I am going to apologize.
So, Ms. Owen, you agree? So we're withdrawing the... So item... So item 11F has been withdrawn from the agenda, correct? The motion. Yeah. Yeah. So now the... Okay. That's it? Okay. We will move on to our other public forum speakers. Michelle Meehan? Hi, Michelle.
Hi.
So you brought your kiddos tonight?
Yes. My husband's coaching softball.
I get it.
My name is Michelle Meehan. I am a Knox County resident. I'm here representing many families and expressing our deep concerns that KCS might spend over $400,000 on something completely unnecessary. On Page B10 of the Budget for Special Education Under Other Expenses, there's a note that requests $420,000 for additional training from the fund balance. This is apparently for a massive audit of the special education system, not what one might understand as it is line item description in service staff development schools. Two months ago, parents came to you to ask, "Where was the RFP tied to Jason Meyer's January 8th presentation that included specific references to the least restrictive environment and modified content based on Task Force Recommendation Number Two, essentially to bring in and inclusion expert and support teachers in best inclusive practices? Then what appeared a month later was an RFP completely unconnected to what we as a public and we imagine you as a school board members were led to believe as fulfilling Jason Meyer's month-long detailed assurances. KCS and every Tennessee school district already gets a deep dive of the special education audit each year from the state. The results are posted on the TDO website and are quite clear. So we get this information every year, and it's no coincidence that the areas we consistently fall short are on the issues over which we face lawsuits, like LRE and child fine. I can tell you that as one of the probably 10 families who have a student on alternate assessment, being educated for over 80% of their day in the general education environment, the continually missed target for LRE in K-12 doesn't come anywhere close to representing the true scope of our district's problem. I say this because in the past nine months, what I have witnessed is unnecessary segregation being challenged in IEP meetings and flipped from as much as 5.5 hours per day in a CDC room to full-time gen ed with appropriate supports and services. And guess what? Success all around, even with time to provide modified content being the biggest support need for teachers in each case. So this is where the Task Force focuses recommendations, on the need for best inclusive practices. Did you know that Justin Gilbert, the attorney who won the MQ landmark case against Knox County, was asked to speak to the Task Force last year? He volunteered his time over Zoom and basically told the Task Force how to put him out of a job. him out of a job here in Knox County schools. This is probably why the task force was so clear in its recommendations. We know our district's deficits, and just like in IEPs after our kids' deficits are identified, we need to get to work making meaningful progress. Spending hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars on an audit does not align with the resolution passed in September. To take away what parents have been told to expect and substitute it with something else is not only a financial mistake, but a huge betrayal of trust. I do have a couple copies written by professional who partner with school districts in implementing best inclusive practices, and I wanted to give those to a couple. Betsy's my representative.
Thank you, Michelle. See, Christie, I'm so sorry, Christie, I cannot read her last name. Yes, come on up.
Well, my name is Christie Taft, and I'm a, I belong, I live in the county, Knox County, and I'm a teacher that has been teaching since I was 21, so it's been along, and I'm still teaching. Not in the public school, though. And we moved here in 2012, and one of the first places we visited was Kate's Cove. We really hoped to see a black bear. We saw a crowd stopped on the side of the road, and they pointed to a place where one had just been sighted. I ran to the spot, and there was a bear, but it was a baby bear rambling around in the grass, not far from where I was standing. I was hoping to get a good picture of it, but I stopped and thought, where's the mother? And then I looked and I saw her coming, and so I took off running. And I knew I didn't want to come between a bear, a baby bear and its mother. Not only bears will risk their lives to protect their young, but also most animals, especially birds, it's in their instinct. Now, this is true for children. Most of the time, children don't know what is safe and what is dangerous. In their innocence, they trust that their parents will protect them from all harm. It's the responsibility of the parents to protect their children. The parents will sometimes let another authority like family, a school, or church share in this responsibility. If they don't do a good job of protecting the children, the parents should remove their child from the care. Letting the children see pornography and hear about things they can't really understand, like transgenderism, bisexual, nonsexual, and on and on, is a burden and too heavy for a child. These things will only trouble their little hearts and make them worry. As children, they cannot really understand it all. We need to protect them from such things. Here's a quote from Corey Ten Boom, who in World War II helped rescue Jews from going to the concentration camps, and she wrote a book called The Hiding Place. She remembers a lesson her father taught her when she was small. She asked a question, and the answer was beyond her understanding as a child. Her father then asked her if she could carry a heavy, if she would carry the heavy suitcase that they were getting on the train. Corey replied that the suitcase was too heavy for her, but not too heavy for her father. In response, her father said that God knew when burdens were too heavy for her to bear, and that God had provided her parents to carry them for her. Later, God would carry many burdens in that concentration camp and carry them, help her carry them. Whatever it takes to protect our children from harm, and it's good, and it's our responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Sherri Garrett. Sherri? Hello?
My name is Sherri Garrett, and I live in Knox County. And, no, we did not coordinate our speeches. I'm going to start off. Corey Ten Boom was a Dutch watchmaker and later a Christian writer and public speaker who worked with her father, Casper Ten Boom, her sister Betsy, and other family members, to help many Jewish people escape from the Nazis during the Holocaust and World War II by hiding them in her home. In her book, The Hiding Place, Corey described a conversation with her father as they were coming home on a train, and she heard a phrase in a poem at school that she did not understand and was troubling her. So seated next to father in the train compartment, I suddenly asked, "Father, what is sex sin?" He turned to look at me as he always did when answering a question, but to my surprise, he said nothing. At last, he stood up, lifting his traveling case from the rack over our heads and set it on the floor. "Will you carry it off the train, Corey?" he said. I stood up and tugged at it. It was crammed with the watches and spare parts he had purchased that morning. "It's too heavy," I said. "Yes," he said, "and it would be a pretty poor father who would ask his little daughter to carry such a load." "It's the same way, Corey, with knowledge. Some knowledge is too heavy for children. When you are older and stronger, you can bear it. For now, you must trust me to carry it for you." And I was satisfied, more than satisfied, wonderfully at peace. There were answers to this and all my hard questions, for now I was content to leave them in my father's keeping. This memory from early in her life was one that she kept with her in the face of witnessing and experiencing horrors beyond imaginizing during her time in concentration camp. After seeing something torturous, she had these thoughts. It was father's train case once again. Such cruelty was too much to grasp, too much to bear. Heavenly Father, carry it for me. We're all experiencing suffering, pain, and trauma in life. Often, the weight of the world can feel too heavy a burden to carry. As life unfolds around us and brings loss and suffering, we can become lost in a sea of why questions. We feel alone, abandoned, confused, and lost. In these moments of despair, we need to trust what is true of our Heavenly Father over our feelings. He never leaves us or forsakes us. He has unending love for us. He is sovereign over all our suffering and joy. He will always carry what is too heavy for us. How much knowledge are we asking our children to carry? We're asking our children to carry a burden of knowledge that is too heavy for them to carry. While it is ultimately a parental responsibility to make sure their children are not carrying too heavy a burden, Knox County schools must make sure it's not adding to this. Fortunately, some of our state legislators realize this and have during the session passed an amendment to HB 863, which most of you already have, that was given tonight. For the purposes of this section, material that is, in whole or part contains nudity, descriptions or depictions of sexual excitement, conduct, excess violence, or sedamasochistic abuse, is not appropriate for the age or maturity level of a student in any of the grades kindergarten through 12, and must not be maintained in Knox County schools, in a school library's collection, or is patently offensive. These amendments have been confirmed by Casey Washburn, the legislative attorney for the Tennessee General Assembly, and will be forwarded to this board, as you guys have already received tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherri. Lauren? Hey, Lauren. Just at your nine-county residence, you have three minutes.
Sure, thank you. Good afternoon to my Knox County school board members. My name is Lauren Breslin, and I am a West Coast political refugee. My family moved to Knoxville last fall, and we have been spending these past few months scouting out Protestant churches and political action organizations. Today, I would like to use my three minutes to introduce myself and share why I will be closely following this school board's policies and procedures. Personally, I am a wife to a Navy veteran, so the encouragement of patriotism in our government schools is very important to me. We have four children, ages 17 down to 10. I have homeschooled them with a classical education for the past 12 years. Parental rights, religious freedom, medical freedom, and the freedom to educate without state involvement are top priorities for our family. I am not a fan of school choice that comes with more government funding or oversight. Professionally, I've been in higher education for over 25 years. I have taught private courses for private and state universities and community colleges. My experiences in those settings led me to the realization that the government school system has been failing children for decades. I found that most students were ill-prepared for the academic rigors of higher education. Hence, I have home-educated all of our children, and I am not actively encouraging any of them to enter a state college system. Politically, I have joined Knox for Liberty, which promotes the values of faith, family, and freedom. Through my participation, I actively follow local voting records and policy issues. I also work for Moms for America, which is a national movement of moms reclaiming our culture for truth, family freedom, and the Constitution. I am the executive assistant for the National School Boards Leadership Council, which helps school boards achieve their goals by focusing on elevating academics and leaving developing worldviews to parents. Finally, I am a new member of Moms for Liberty, and I plan on attending and speaking at school board meetings when my schedule allows. My last point to share is that one of my former home states is Oregon. We lived there for almost a decade. The Oregon Department of Education has enthusiastically embraced critical race theory, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and comprehensive sex ed, including supporting gender expansive curriculum. Last year, they dropped all graduation requirements and no longer require basic reading, writing, or math skills. What began as an attempt to be more inclusive and equitable has now resulted in adding even more hardship for students who will be completely unprepared for their next chapter as adults and U.S. citizens. I hope you see the connection and will make every effort to stay focused on academics. Leave the sex discussions, the political activism, and the medical decisions to parents who are the true experts of their own children. Thanks for your time and attention, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, Lauren. And thank you for your husband's service to our country. Sherri Super? Oh, okay. Oh, he, I'm sorry, what's the rest of it?
Yeah, he'll go twice, yes.
Gotcha, okay, okay.
All righty, Sherri Super, Knox County. I've been on Facebook this week, the social media mental institution, and some of the things that they say about this board and my group and people like me, when they don't think you're looking, let me just share a couple things. We've been called evangelical Trumpers, crypto Nazis, terrorists, cultists, murderers, and sociopaths all in the last few days. One post said, "I was challenged to read Gender Queer by the local leaders and the crypto Nazi movement. I've gotten insight into what's wrong with these Moms for Liberty people who'd have thought we'd have to, who'd have thought we'd have to stand up to Nazis in 2024 in Knoxville?" It would take a pretty sick, twisted individual to read this book, what, this book, what the Nazi woman claims was in here. I don't know what that even means. These people are trying to ban our books and turn our schools into shooting galleries. Well, Facebook suspended me for 22 hours for posting something from Gender Queer on Facebook, the same book that he thinks is perfectly fine. See, guys, all of this, this is what's in the schools. Then he goes on to have a little something to say about Betsy. "Betsy Henderson has supported more ways for the school board to assassinate children than any other school board member. She blatantly stated on the record that she is in favor of infecting children with deadly diseases and now just shooting them outright. The woman is a terrorist who belongs in jail, and now she wants teachers to shoot up our schools. It's like a scene from One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest. Guys, these people don't like us. They're not afraid to say it. To my Republican friends, to my conservative friends, stand up for yourselves. Have courage. Tell them no. You know, they talked, we've talked about this for seven months with these books, and what we got was a lousy, you know, we've been coming here, we got a lousy review committee. But when these people come in and they start screaming and yelling, you know, we're intimidated. You're all concerned about the school, teachers with guns, but you're not concerned about the fact that there's 87 books, 21 volumes from Assassination Classroom where kids are being shown how to shoot up a school. But you won't get the books out because we need a committee. Thank goodness that the Tennessee legislature has put something into place that will get some of this garbage out. But you didn't need a law, you needed some courage, right? And we're going to make some changes, and I appreciate everything that you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Murphy? Sean?
Hi, Sean Murphy, Knox County. Can I just, before we start, can I just ask a two-point of order? Okay, first question. My understanding of the law is we're allowed to talk on an item on the agenda as well as talk under public comment. I assume I have that correct because you're letting me speak.
Well, I think, I'm sorry, I stepped out for a second, but I believe you did take up the three minutes on the other item, so I think we'd have to vote to allow you to have another three minutes.
Is that, okay, I don't, my understanding is that, and this is where I'm asking for clarification, that the law is individuals are allowed to speak on any item on the agenda, and that's separate from public comment. So I'll stop talking because you said you had to follow procedure.
I totally see what you're asking. Mr. Depler?
It's not a law, it's board policy, and board policy states that, you know, you can, you can sign up to speak for three minutes. Tonight, because it's a voting meeting, you can sign up for any topic whatsoever, but you can sign up for three minutes, period.
Like altogether?
Is that the law?
It's board policy.
I understand that. I asked if that's the law, though. The law, my understanding of the law is different than what your stating policy is.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to answer any more questions.
Since you're not recognizing me, I'll stop talking. If you want to allow me to talk, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, well, we'll vote, we'll have to vote. So I make a motion to let Mr. Murphy speak for three more minutes. Is there a second? Sorry. And I think Ellen, I believe Ellen went before, but I just wanted to check, that I did not miss you again. Did go, okay. All right, well, we have no more public forum speakers, so with that, we are adjourned.